I hope you've all had a chance to read the dedication in the front of our town report. There's a gaping hole in the middle of the auditorium today. For those who aren't aware, Ed passed away this last fall, and he will be missed at this meeting. So before I read out the warning, just a couple of reminders. Basically, Robert's Rules of Orders guide us. This body can override Robert's rules. With a two-thirds majority, you can kind of do what you want. There are some instances where state law supersedes Robert's rules, and they're pretty rare, but in those cases, we cannot change Vermont law. You can cut off debate by a motion to call the question. Everyone needs to wait to be recognized by the moderator before you speak. Our scouts will bring the microphone to you. Please wait for the microphone. I know some of you think you can project, but we always get people that can't hear their neighbor speaking, so they'll be quick on their feet. They've gotten taller and lankier over the last few years, as you can see, so they'll get the microphones to you right away. Just if you don't mind stating your name, so everybody knows who you are. I would remind everybody that, as always, we can disagree without being disagreeable, so I would expect everybody to be polite and courteous in all of your comments, even if you don't agree with somebody. And my job is to make sure that this meeting runs smoothly and everybody gets a chance to speak that wants to, just not all at once. And let me call the meeting to order, and then I have a couple of points of business. So, "The legal voters of the town of Woodstock, County of Windsor, State of Vermont are hereby notified and warned to meet at Town Hall Theater in said town on the 1st of March 2025 at 10:00 a.m. for the annual meeting and on Tuesday, March 4th, 2025, between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. to act on the following. The legal voters of the town of Woodstock are further notified that voter qualifications, registration, and absentee voting relative to said meeting shall be as provided in Chapters 43, 51, and 55 of Title 17 Vermont statutes annotated. You must be registered to vote in the town of Woodstock in order to vote at town meeting." With our meeting now called to order, if there is no objection, just a couple of points of order. Article 13, I would like to move to after Article 15, just it'll flow better if there's no objection with that. And I would also like this body, at some point, I will, between articles, I'll welcome, I know Allison and Charlie would like to speak to this body. If there are no objections, they're both actually Woodstock residents, so they have a right to speak at this meeting. And I would also ask that we suspend the rules if there's anybody that has relevant information that is not a voter, that we would let them speak at my discretion. If that's, I see no objection, so moving forward. Each article needs to be moved and seconded before we can act on it. So, Article 1. Shall the voters of Woodstock vote to collect the town general, highway, school taxes, and state education taxes on real property and all other taxes levied through the treasurer under the provisions of Title 32 Vermont statutes annotated, Chapter 133, and fix the dates of payments as November 7, 2025, and May 1, 2026, and to require payment to be received by the town office by close of business on those dates? What is your pleasure on Article 1?
Marion Coats here, so.
Moved by Marion Coats here. Is there a second? Second by Mary Riley. Any questions or comments on Article 1? I would point out, people should read carefully that that last line, the payments have to be received, it's not a postmark anymore. So that's important for people to take note of. We do run into that on the Board of Civil Authority where people have forgotten that. If there are no questions or comments on Article 1, we will now vote on Article 1. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Article 1 is adopted. Article 2. Shall the voters of Woodstock vote to pay the town officers in accordance with Title 24 Vermont statutes annotated, Section 932, as follows? Select Board $1,000 per year, Town Treasurer $13,000 per year, Listers $28.99 per hour, Constable $25.76 per hour, Town Clerk $36.53 per hour, and Moderator $100 each time served. What's your pleasure on Article 2? Yes, Roy?
Yeah, I'm moved by Roy.
Moved by Roy Bates. Is there a second?
No.
Second, Jennifer Maxum. Any questions, comments on Article 2? Seeing none, we will vote on Article 2. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article 2 is adopted. Article 3. Shall the voters of Woodstock vote to appropriate the sum of $8,352,359.54, which includes the specified sums of money to operate each department, and to raise by taxation the amount up to $7,267,659.56, which is the necessary sum to defray operating costs for fiscal year 2025 to 2026? What is your pleasure on Article 3?
Move Article 3.
Moved by Allison Clarkson. Is there a second?
Second.
Yep, got it. Would you guys like to speak a little bit about the budget? I'll recognize the select board at this point. And Eric?
Before we start, can I just introduce ourselves, everyone? Matt, you're on the first.
Sure. For those who don't know me, I'm Matt Maxum. I'm your town moderator.
Eric Duffy, municipal manager.
Hi, I'm Laura Powell, and I'm on the select board.
Susan Ford, select board.
Ray Bourgeois, select board.
Greg Fullerton, select board.
Carrie Call, select board.
Charlie Diggler, town clerk.
Okay, so I'll quickly kind of go over the budget process, how we got to where we are right now. It's a long process. It starts internally, probably in August, as the finance department and myself start looking at what we're going to do for the next fiscal year. We send out budget sheets to department heads using October, give them about a few weeks to go over their budgets. They meet with myself and the finance department to kind of talk through what they're asking for. At that point, we have presentations to the select board from the department heads where they can kind of advocate for their budget. The select board gets asked questions on what is in the budget, what their challenges are, what their needs are, and kind of what the long-term future of the department is. At that point, myself and my finance department make a recommendation to the select board on what we think the new budget should be, and then the select board spends numerous meetings and public meetings debating on what the budget should be, how it aligns with the goals and objectives, and how best to kind of provide the services you require with trying to be aware of the tax rate and the school tax, and how we can kind of split that This year's budget is about a 4.1% increase over expenses from last year. That stems mostly from two things. One is increase in health insurance costs. We're looking at about a 12% increase in health insurance just this year alone. Further, as we'll get to the goals and objectives in a minute, the select board voted on this this year. They're finally looking at ways to kind of allocate money for needed infrastructure, for capital reserves, and to kind of actually fund the departments the way they need to be funded, so we can provide the services that you require for the town to operate. This is kind of our first big swing at funding the budget the way they need to be. With that being said, if you attended any of these meetings with the department heads, every single one of them will tell you they need more funds to provide the services they need to. We're trying our best to kind of split that difference of having the funds that they need with also balancing, you know, your wallet. So we're trying to split that difference, but we're working to try to actually create a budget that actually what Woodstock needs to operate as municipality. Looking at what the tax rate is actually going to be, when we put together the budget originally, we were working off the old grand list number, and we're looking at about a 10.75% tax increase for this fiscal year. With a updated grand list, that looks more like a 6.9% tax increase over this current year. The grand list is not finalized, so as the grand list is finalized, that number will shift, but we're happy to see it come down almost by 5% from where we projected it a month ago. Also, that looks at about a $48 increase per $1,000 appraisal on your house, so if your house is appraised at $500,000, you're looking at about $250,000 more per year in Yeah, I think I kind of already went over this, I have myself, but we're still trying to create a better, more efficient, and more stable budget for the town. Some of the articles we have later on is part of that process. One of the goals we talked about last year that we did not achieve is to do zero budgeting. We just didn't have the bandwidth this year with trying to buy the water system and the capital projects, so that's something that we couldn't fully do this year, but it's on our goal for next year, and we're still working internally on putting together a five-year capital plan, which we'll hopefully announce in the coming months.
So Eric mentioned, this is the first budget. We did with goals and objectives in the spring. Both boards, the village board of trustees and the select board, voted on objectives which are high-level, long-term goals, or long-term objectives, areas that we wanted to focus on, which are these four: housing and development, climate resiliency, affordability, and effective, efficient government. And then we have fiscal year goals that tie into those things, so those objectives are mutually exclusive of each other, and if you go on the town website, or you want to watch those meetings, we had, I think, maybe five, five or six meetings with the trustees where we hashed this out and discussed what was reasonable to achieve this year and what's achievable beyond that. So we're really excited to make progress on these, and like Eric said, this is the first time that both boards have had goals, and it's to help guide our decision-making.
And just one last point, is if you watch any of those budget meetings, and again, they're all public, they're all online, numerous times in the discussions, as we talked about what to fund, what not to fund, this is like what fell back on, does this go towards one of our goals or not? And if it did, they tried to fund it, if not, they kind of got rid of it. Susan Ford has mentioned, after this process, going through the budget internally and taking away things that don't align with our goals and objectives.
Are there any questions or comments, questions of the board about this budget? Yes. Morgan, can you get the? If you want, stand up, Doug.
Hello, my name's Douglas Kelleher, West Woodstock. So I would ask somebody to give us an overview of what is the status of the water system right now? Do we own it? Have we bought it yet? I noticed another article in here about the budget on the water. It's a little confusing to me about where we stand with it, and I'd just appreciate some kind of overview on that.
Yeah, that's a great question. So let me talk about the two articles on the budget, on the warning now about the water budget, and then I'll get into the status. So the two articles, one is to create a budget for next fiscal year, for July 1, as we would with the sewer budget or our government budget. The second article is to vote to have a budget for the remainder of the fiscal year. The hope is we close on this water system within the coming months, and once we close on that system, we actually have to have a budget to run that system, so that's where the two articles come from. We'll talk about that more as we get to that point. But we're currently in negotiations, kind of at the end, trying to figure out the last few small things before we sign an agreement with them.
Answer your question?
Yes.
Are there any other questions? If I don't see you up in the back, feel free to kind of yell out to me, but... Yes. Is that Mike?
I think, I think you said there was a major change in the way you were handling the health insurance, and moving it all into one, the select board's account. Can you just explain that to me?
Yeah, so traditionally, what we do is we have the health insurance kind of under every department, and the health insurance RC is a different cost depending on what an employee chooses, so a family, couple, single plan. And what we found was, it was an inefficient way to kind of monitor it, because a department could be harmed by going over the budget simply by having employees who choose our more expensive plan, or have extra money in the budget because employees chose a lesser plan or chose not to get insurance. And this was a way to kind of put it all in one place, so we can kind of have insurance and let the department's budgets function as what they need for day-to-day operations. It also allows us to track the cost better over time, because we can kind of then have a baseline on what it's going to be each year, and kind of base it off that.
Any other questions or comments on Article 3? Yes. Right behind you, Ryan.
David McGuire, Woodstock. The costs are going up 4%, and the tax rate 7. With the stable grand list, can you explain the discrepancy?
Yeah, so, how I said, so it's basically the $8 million budget, a 4% increase to cover that. Taxes are not $8 million, they're around $6, $6.5 million. So you need to raise more of that to cover the added costs, so 4% on 8 million is more than 4% on 6 million. So that's where the two differences come from.
And some of the budget also comes from other sources, fees and such?
Yes, if you look in your, I don't have the page in front of me, but we have a kind of a balance sheet, and you'll see the difference between, so page 30, you'll see taxes raised about $7.2 million, and about $1 million comes from some other revenue. So that'll be fees, permit fees that the town collects that are not taxed, not from taxes.
Are there any other questions or comments on Article 3 before we vote? Way in the back there, Morgan, can you go all the way in the back?
Albert Einstein. Doug Leonard. I like even numbers. I'd like to see this budget at 8 million even. I'm sure, I'm sure we can cut costs here and there. Do we really need to put crash bars in front of the police cruisers? You know? That's just an expense that we don't need.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Marion Coats here, right in the middle. Morgan.
On the capital reserve we have for an update of the grand list, could you give me a sense of the timing? I assume that means a reappraisal.
Say it one more time?
The grand list update that's in the capital reserve, what is the plan for that?
Yeah, so that is starting this fall, right Kathy? So is that this fall, in two years?
Correct.
Yes. So they met with the company last month, I believe, decided the process, so it's not this fall, in table two years before it's completed.
Any other questions or comments before we vote on Article 3? Seeing none. Article 3. Shall the voters of Woodstock vote to appropriate the sum of $8,352,359.54, which includes the specified sums of money to operate each department, and to raise by taxation the amount up to $7,267,659.56, which is the necessary sum to defray operating costs for fiscal year 2025 to 2026? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Article 3 is adopted. Article 4. Shall the voters of Woodstock vote to appropriate the sum of one, sorry, shall the voters of Woodstock vote to appropriate the sum of $1,443,076.55, which includes up to $1,400,573.55 from user fees and up to $42,500 from other revenues to pay the current expenses and debt of the sewer department for fiscal year 2025 to 2026? What is your pleasure on Article 4?
Who moved it?
Who moved it? Oh, Kitty, got it.
Second.
And second, Allison Clarkson. Are there questions or comments on Article 4? Yes, right over here. Axel, if you can get right back here.
Hi, good morning. Elizabeth Frascoia from Taftsville. I'm just curious, how long we expect to have debt on this? I'm not as familiar with the sewer budget, and is this a long-term debt that we're paying off, and will be multiple years?
Are you referring to the South Woodstock debts?
It says expenses and debt.
There are several bonds.
Yeah, there are several bonds. South Woodstock was 30 years? Yeah. If you can give me one moment, I can pull it up, just give me one second. There's another question.
Generally speaking, there are ongoing upgrades and things that lead to bonded indebtedness over the years. There is a question all the way in the back, Ryan, if you could... We will get to that.
Amy McElroy, Woodstock. Just a question, I'm looking at the town report, and Article 4 does not read the same as what you're showing up above. The numbers are different.
You're off by a dollar, it says 77. What's in the town report is what's correct. This is just for presentation. It says 77, and in the report it says 76. I think those are rounded. Those are just rounded for general purposes.
And then to the other question, sorry, it's a 30-year bond for South Woodstock.
Are we in the middle of that, 30 years?
We're, I think, two years in, yeah.
Are there other questions? There's one, Marion has one. Morgan, if you could.
But for clarification, this article is related to also the operating expenses. The bond payment may be in there, but it's the operating expenses of the sewer department.
Correct, it's every expense to run the sewer department.
Are there other questions or comments about Article 4? Seeing none, we will now vote on Article 4. Shall the voters of Woodstock vote to appropriate the sum of $1,443,076.55, which includes up to $1,400,573.55 from other revenues, from user fees, and up to $42,500 from other revenues to pay the current expenses and debt of the sewer department for fiscal year 2025 to 2026? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Article 4 is adopted. Article 5. Shall the voters of Woodstock vote to appropriate the sum of $735,226.17, which includes up to $487,845.37 from user fees, and $247,380.80 from other revenues to pay the current expenses and debt of the water department for fiscal year 2025 to 2026? What's your pleasure on Article 5? Moved by Doug Leonard?
No, no, no.
Nope? What?
I'm moved, I need a microphone.
Oh.
He has a question.
He has a question. We have to get it on the floor first. So, Suzie moved it. Betty Ann McGuire, second. Yes, Doug, you have a question or comment? All the way in the back, Morgan.
How did you arrive at this figure? And on page 46, you have $15,000 for line replacement? How did you come up with that figure?
Yeah, so, I'll answer the second one first. So those bottom three are for capital reserves, since that putting money away to repair the infrastructure and build up funds to be able to do that over the course of the years. The second, the larger, how we get to the budget, is the select board had numerous meetings public as they talked about purchasing the water company, so they put together a budget based on what they thought it would cost to run a water company. For reference, we talked numerous times in those meetings about how the Aqueduct was basically underfunded, it didn't have the money to do the work needed. Their budget this year is about $430,000. We're asking for a $735,000 budget. That is what we feel is a good first number to decide running the water system, and actually having money to make the repairs we need.
$15,000 is very cheap.
So it's for capital reserve, so it's each year you put in a certain amount of money, and then over a year, you build up that number, so you have enough funds.
Are there other questions or comments on Article 5? Right over here, sorry. I don't know if I catch the periphery, thank you.
Michael Peters, Woodstock. I'm just curious, is this prorated based on when it gets closed? Like if this takes another couple of months, does this number come down significantly?
So that's the next article. This is for fiscal year next year, for July 1, 2025 through June 2026.
Yes, Morgan, right back up the aisle.
Susan Fuller. Just for clarification, because I'm sure other people would want to know, what are you considering other revenues?
So those are water connections. So for everyone who pays a bill, the first 300 cubic feet is $60 a quarter, so we'll put in that as other revenue, so that's the main driver there. Yeah, so also, and we also have tasked the finance committee with looking at new ways to do the rates, and they're working on it. I got an email this morning on their progress. So this is kind of what the select board did by themselves to have numbers ready for July 1, but as you know, the finance committee has very intelligent people on them, and they're working on the most efficient and effective way to have better water rates for Woodstock.
Any other questions or comments? Great, seeing none. Article 5. Shall the voters of Woodstock vote to appropriate the sum of $735,226.17, which includes up to $487,845.37 from user fees, and $247,380.80 from other revenues to pay the current expenses and debt of the water department for fiscal year 2025 to 2026? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Article 5 is adopted. Article 6. Shall the voters of Woodstock vote to appropriate the sum of up to $183,806.54 from user fees and from other revenues to pay the expenses and debt of the water department from April 2025 through June 2025? What's your pleasure on Article 6? Somebody want to move it?
I'm moved by Allison.
Moved by Allison, second, Jeff Khan. He beat you to it.
I could just speak, Lee. So straightforward, the hope has been to close on the water company by the end of March, which means we'd own it for April, May, June. So basically, this number is a quarter of what the budget you just approved would be for fiscal year. The language says up to, so if we close later in the year, then that number will be adjusted as well for the rest of the fiscal year.
Other questions or any comments on Article 6? Seeing none, we'll now vote on Article 6. Yes, oh, sorry, Marion. Absolutely. Right up in the middle.
Just if there is a later closing and the budget gets reduced, but we've approved the 183, that if there is an excess of tax collected, well, actually, it isn't, because it's all user fees, right?
Correct.
So there should be, no, it should be just a wash.
Yeah, so let me, let's say we close on April 2nd, April 1st, we, you know, decrease it a certain percent. Legally, we cannot raise more money through utility fund- Legally, we cannot raise more money through utility fund than we need to operate the system.
Any other questions or comments before we vote? Seeing none. I think everyone's familiar with it, Article Six. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Article Six is adopted. Article Seven, shall the voters of Woodstock vote to appropriate the sum of $900 and pay each of the trustees $300 for the purpose of paying the trustees of public funds for services rendered and approve the expenditure from the income of the trust funds for that purpose? What's your pleasure on Article Seven? Moved by Jennifer Maxim, second by Molly Maxim. Any questions or comments on Article Seven? Seeing none, we will vote on Article Seven. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Article Seven is adopted. Article Eight, shall the voters of Woodstock vote to appropriate the sum of $1,500 for the purpose of having the public trust funds audited and approve the expenditure of $1,500 from income of the trust funds to pay for the annual audit? What's your pleasure on Article Eight? Moved by Sally Garman, second by Marion, yep. Any questions or comments? Marion has a question.
Um, I, I was, served as an auditor, maybe for the village a while back and my memory is that there really isn't that much income from the funds to cover that level of audit. And I, and I also understood that it was kind of included in the whole town audit thing, so I'm, I'm curious if that is a honest reflection of what it costs to audit the funds, which I don't disagree with. I just want to be sure that the funds are available within the funds.
Yeah, so yearly, the, the fund will send us this money to kind of offset the cost of going through the audits. I don't have the exact number of what it costs to do just this individual audit. It is wrapped up into our overall audit. We use the same auditing firm for, for both. But that's a good question I can look into for next year, a more accurate number if you want. It does fluctuate each year depending on how much money, how much time it takes actually to go through the funds.
It has been.
It has, this has been the same number, but like the actual auditing cost fluctuates each year.
Morgan, just behind you, Jill Davies has a question.
Oh, Jill's here, good, perfect.
Hi, I'm Jill Davies, I live in the village, but I'm one of the public trust fund, the trustees of public funds. The cost has been the same for many, many years. It does need to be reviewed. What we've been doing for the past few years is trying to make the way that we manage the funds simpler, closing some of the smaller funds so that there is less to audit, and a review would be great in the next 12 months.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on Article Eight?
I just want to thank Jill Davies, the work she does on this fund, so thank you, Jill.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we will vote on Article Eight. Shall the voters of Woodstock vote to appropriate the sum of $1,500 for the purpose of having the public trust funds audited and approve the expenditure of $1,500 from income of the trust funds to pay for the annual audit? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Article Eight is adopted. Do you have a timeline, Allison? Um, we're going to have a paper ballot coming up. Let's, have you speak then, if that works? Soon. All right. Yeah, why don't we, why don't we just have, why don't we cede the stage to you and Charlie briefly? And then we'll continue on. Charlie's still here, isn't he? Yeah, I knew I saw you come in. So at this time, we'll just, before we move to Article Nine, we'll hear from our state representative and one of our state senators.
Look at the new paint job, everybody. Appreciate the gorgeous new paint job here.
Good morning. Still working, yeah. Good morning, my name is Charlie Kimball, I'm the state representative for Woodstock, Redding and Plymouth, so nice to see you all again this morning. Before I get started, I just want to really comment on the fact that Eric Duffy is really rocking the socks this morning.
Eric, Eric!
As, as, we were coming from Redding, where we were meeting with the town meeting in there, and then coming north on 106, it's good to know that the frost heaves are alive and well at this time of year. Almost spilled my coffee a couple of times, but it's certainly a beautiful time of year to be driving around, it was a beautiful day. And what a great winter for everything, from skiing, recreation, logging, snow machines, so it's been very good for everyone, so thank you. I wanted to talk to you, I've been, I've had the pleasure of serving as your state representative three previous terms and now in the first session of this new term. And I serve on the House Ways and Means Committee, which is responsible for raising revenues to support the efforts of state government, and that means taxes and fees. And I know that doesn't sound exciting, but it really is. But I wanted to talk to you about a couple of different things. One is the proposal from the governor about the education transformation, and I'm sure everyone has been reading about that. And I've been spending most every day, hours every day, in the legislature dealing with what that means. And basically, the, here's a couple of things. One is the Commission on the Future of Public Education was charged with coming up with some cost containment ideas for, to recommend by December of 2024. And they largely punted on the idea because they said, "Any real meaningful cost containment or reductions are going to come with changes in governance and delivery of education in the state," and they didn't have enough time. And that's true. So if you think about that, it's, it's really, you can come up with short-term reductions in property tax, property tax relief, and we will be doing that this year. But long-term structural change is what's needed to come up with a lower cost. But, the governor then delivered a large proposal to look at governance, look at delivery, and look at funding, all three of those things. And the one, if you're familiar with it, is to go from 119 school districts down to five for the entire state. So that by itself is a huge change. The second is in terms of delivery, looking at different class sizes, increasing the number, the class size for students, going mandatory 25 or a target of 25 for kids that are, you know, fourth up to 12th grade. So that's a big change as well, that, which would mean school consolidation. The other is really looking at the funding structure, and this is about the foundation formula. How many of you are familiar with the foundation formula and how it's constructed? Awesome, that's more hands than came up in, in Redding. It's, it's very, it's very complex, but essentially it's this. It turns on its head how we currently fund education, which is we decide budgets on a local basis and then send that to the state to raise taxes, property taxes, to help fund all the school budgets. That's how it works now. This is different. This is where the state would say, "Based on our analysis, it costs X number of dollars to educate a student in Vermont." And that, that, right now, that number's 13,200, that's the base funding. And then it's adjusted by different weights for whether somebody's coming from a different country, has to learn English, English language learners, or from a poor community or has special needs, or they have to have additional instruction or facilities for their education. So that's weighted, so you take the base, plus the weights, multiply the number of pupils, and that's what you get for a school to spend. It's more elegant, in one sense, because the school gets to know much earlier on how much money they have to spend and what they have to do to organize around their education system. But, the base has to be right. Base rate has to be right in order for that to work. What's included in the base really matters. The legislature right now has been diving into the spreadsheets, down to the cells and the formulas in the spreadsheet, for all those nerds out there, you'll really appreciate the work that we're doing, to figure out, is it the right number? And right now, we don't think it is. So we're working on making the adjustments to figure out, what is the right base amount to guarantee that our kids have the right amount of money? The second is, this is a, this is not a one-year thing. You know, we're talking about a large transformation. I don't think five school districts is right, we're probably talking about 12 or 20. Some have proposed one for the whole state, where we have 83,000 students in the state of Vermont. So it's, it's really a challenge to get to that right number. We're in the middle of those discussions and what that looks like, but there's a whole bunch of governance that has to happen. If you remember the pain we all went through with Act 46, take that and multiply it by 50 or 100. So that's really the difficulty we have in organizing those structures. Lastly, just to talk about delivery. What schools will we have in five years and in 10 years? This is recommending larger regional high schools. Well, this is where Woodstock could benefit, in terms of looking at a regional high school that serves a greater population area. So, we've had a failed bond vote for a new school last year, not suggesting that we go to a new bond vote now. We have to look at what that structure looks like for the entire state to figure out what the right balanced number of schools are, how it's structured and how that looks. So that's what we're working on in the state legislature to figure that out. For property tax relief, we're looking at something for a couple of year period where we're going to use some general funds or some excess funds to help buy down the property tax rate in the education fund. That's not a long-term, fiscally responsible method of doing it. But, it's what's available to us, unless we want to change from property taxes, which are really stable, and go to income taxes, which are not as stable. And that would mean that income taxes would have to rise to make up the difference. So, it's, it's one of those, those things that I've written a couple of articles for the Vermont Standard, thank you Vermont Standard for publishing those, on what property tax relief looks like, on what the foundation formula is, to try to explain some of these complicated concepts. But, that's what my focus has been on in this legislative session, was I'm going to continue to work on this year and next year. So there are many issues, of course, but that's what I'm focused on. So, I'd love to take questions afterwards. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And now I'll turn it over to your state senator, Allison Clarkson. Thank you very much.
Don't go away. I love having, we are really lucky to have Charlie on Ways and Means this year. I served for, for eight years on Ways and Means, and I know what he's tackling, because we never did this. It is a total pleasure to be in this renovated space. I hope we're all appreciating, no peeled paint, beautiful new paint job, and someday we'll be able to open the curtains again and have lovely sunshine. That is all happening. So, thank you to PenTangle and its leadership. Town meeting is a day for us to celebrate our community life together, and I take great joy and pleasure in doing that with you. We, we rank second in the country in terms of public engagement, and town meeting has, is, in large measure, the reason for that, so thank you all for turning out. I'm Allison Clarkson, I have the privilege of representing you in this, in the Senate, and have represented this community now for 21 years, and thank you very much. It is an honor and a pleasure, most of the time. I serve you this by an M as Chair of Senate Economic Development, Housing and General Affairs, and on our Senate Government Operations Committee. And you might not think this, but actually Government Operations pays, is going to be playing a key piece in, in our new transformation of our education system over time, because we'll have to create the wards that make equitable voting in this system. So no matter what size districts we end up with, or how many, we will have to create a system for electing people to those positions on those school, on those new district school boards. And, you know, so it's a, it, it, it's a, it's a, it's a huge challenge. I'd just like to say, we are facing three thorny challenges this year in the legislature. We, you know, it is, we're only there for four and a half months a year, I would just remind you, and some of the challenges we're given are multi-year challenges that require long-term solutions, and they are, are hard to get to in a short period of time. The first real challenge we face is the federal uncertainty at the moment. You may or may not know this, but a third of our state budget, a $9 billion state budget, a third of that is federal money. We will be impacted on a town level, on a personal level, and on a state level. And we are working really hard, the treasurer's put together a task force, working with the administration, our legislative council and office, and joint fiscal office, to really review and analyze the areas we are most vulnerable. And we're vulnerable in a lot of areas. Some whole departments are financed with federal money, like the Department of Labor, which is 90% federal money, transportation, Agency of Human Services, anybody who has any human service needs, from three squares to housing support, to fuel assistance, all, all that, federal money. So we are, we are working diligently to figure out where we're vulnerable and how we can support, support our, our human needs, our real needs in this time, because we do not have enough money to plug all those old Ennet dyke if that happens. So, that is the first area we're really challenged by. The second one, you've heard eloquently by Charlie, who have, who has talked about the transformation of our education funding system. We, the legislature is committed to providing property tax relief this year and next year. So for two years, we'll have a bridge to, to figure out how we can provide the property tax relief that we all need. We need to make it a sustainable education system. We cannot have people resenting helping finance our number-one workforce development system. So, we, we have to have people supporting and loving our education system, and we have to be able to do that so that we can fund it sustainably. I am, I'm so proud of our school board for turning to this tough task, and we should all, just as we thank our terrific select board, we should also thank our school board, because that is also one tough job. And just briefly, the third area, of course, we all love to work on, is our committees. In the Senate, we serve on two committees. In the House, they get to do the deeper dive. It's a great complement, it's not a competition. It's, we really complement our work. We do sort of the big broader strokes and the House cleans up, which is great. And they provide all, they dot the i's and cross the t's and do the in-depth work that we are not afforded to in the Senate, because I chair a committee, I get to, I have this huge mandate, huge task in Senate Economic Development. I get three and a half hours a day for us to pass out significant legislation. So we're working on a big housing bill, we're working on a big, a modest economic development bill, and a labor bill. And the housing is everything from creating an infrastructure financing mechanism so that we can support infrastructure development, to build housing in our smaller communities. In, you know, Woodstock is well poised, but Redding is less so, to build more housing. So we're working on that, and also just the whole range of housing. We're also working to develop a sustainable model to house into the future our, our children and now adults with developmental disabilities. We have our friends and neighbors who have children, and they're aging out and are very concerned about how are these people going to be housed, supported and supported into their later years as these parents age out of being able to actually take care of them. And we're looking at probably over 600 units of housing just to accommodate that special population. So it's, it's exciting work, and in economic development, we're really focusing on supporting our smaller businesses this year, and we'll be having, so it's, we're, we're doing lots of exciting work, and I urge you to go onto the legislative website, particularly if you have some challenges sleeping, you might like to take a peek at one of the Youtubes. In Charlie's committee, is they do a deep dive into something really challenging. But all our work is available on the web, through YouTube, through the legislative webpage. You can read every report we read, you can read every piece of testimony that is submitted by you and to the, and to the state, to the, to the committee. So I urge you, if you're interested in things So, I urge you, if you're interested in things, follow the issues, be in touch. We, I beg your patience with our getting back to you on all emails, because sadly, we are overwhelmed by email, and as you know, we have no staff and no office. That's not excused, it's just a reality. And so, I welcome you to engage fully. Come to the State House for a day, I know a couple of you have just been there recently. It's a very interesting day out. So, thank you so much. We love partnering with our town, and we love partnering with you to help make Vermont a better place to live and play and grow old. Thank you.
So, I would point out, one of these articles coming up, we're going to have a paper ballot, and Charlie said that they would be available in the lobby to take any questions you might have while we're voting. So, that would be an opportunity for any specific questions. Let's get back into business. I'd love to push this through and finish up before we have to break for lunch. So, Article 9, Shall the Voters of Woodstock Vote Pursuant to Title 24 Vermont Statutes Annotated Section 2804 to Create an Infrastructure Reserve Fund Whose Purpose is to Fund Infrastructure Within the Town of Woodstock? What's your pleasure on Article 9? Moved by Betty Ann McGuire. Is there a second? Second, Molly.
Can I speak on this for a second?
Eric, yep.
So, this is just to clean up, last year, you voted to have a new local option tax to go to infrastructure. So, all this does is create a fund for that money, and then the second part of it is to have that revenue actually go into the fund. So, this is a cleanup from last year, so the new 1% that we are receiving, this creates a fund to put it in, and then make sure it can only be spent for infrastructure out of that fund.
Any questions or comments? Thank you. Now, vote on Article 9. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Article 9 is adopted. Article 10, Shall the Voters of Woodstock Vote to Have All Revenue Received by the Town From the 1% Local Option Sales Tax Passed on March 2024 Deposited Into the Infrastructure Reserve Fund? What's your pleasure on Article 10? Moved by Jennifer.
I'll second Roger.
Yep. Any questions or comments on Article 10? I think Eric just explained this.
Looks like David is in the middle.
Oh, David Schwartzman, right here. Ryan, can you?
What's the difference between the Infrastructure Reserve Fund and the Capital Reserve Fund?
So, you're talking about capital reserve funds, and that's in the operating budget?
Yes.
So, those are funds for different departments to put money away to build up reserves over time. So, for example, we're going to buy a new fire engine, so we're allocating money each year that goes in that fund, so when the fire engine has to be paid for, we have the money to pay for it or close to it. This is a local option tax, so any money that comes in goes into this fund, and the select board can decide to use it on any infrastructure project that has to happen in the town.
So, it's a sophisticated slush fund?
It is a fund for any infrastructure needs that goes on the community, and this was approved last year at town meeting.
Morgan, can you?
And I'll just clarify, this fund is funded, like the previous article said, by the local options tax. The capital reserve funds that are in the budget are raised by property taxes and the other revenue the town receives.
Marian.
Just a clarification too, the capital reserve funds, do they require a voter approval to spend funds, and would this one fall in the same category?
No, so when you approve the budget, those capital reserves are going to those funds, and they sit there to be used for those specific purposes. If the select board wants to change the purpose of capital reserve fund, they have to do it in a public meeting by a vote. This article, approved last year, gives the select board the discretion to spend this fund on infrastructure needs in the community. And voted on by the select board in a public meeting as well.
Yes, all the way in the back right here, Ryan, or Axel?
Andy Caffrey, where is this 1% currently going, and what happens to the difference?
Yeah, so right now, it's sitting in a fund we just set up in our general fund. The issue is, any money in the general fund rolls over at the end of the year into undesigned fund balance, so we need a separate fund to put it where it needs to go. This is not dissimilar to the Economic Development Reserve Fund we have, so when the money comes in, it'll just be transferred right to that account, and it'll be its own fund in our
Any other questions? Yep, all the way, Morgan, right behind you. If you can raise your hand so she sees.
Hi, Tom Meyerhoff. I was just wondering, what amount of money do we expect to get from this every year?
That's a great question. So, the select board, when they proposed this last year, estimated about $200,000 a year. As of right now, we received the first two payments, this for each year, and right now, we received $182,000. So, almost double what we expected for this year.
Yes, Doug, right behind you, Morgan.
Douglas Keller, so last year, I asked the question about this tax and how the tax collectors are going to track large purchases from individuals within the town that aren't necessarily purchased from a store in the town. For instance, we have a large building being built up by Maple Fields right now. Is anyone tracking the purchase of those materials and collecting the 1% on that, for instance? Or if somebody buys a large piece of equipment in town from out of state, how do you know we're getting the 1% on that?
Great question. So, if you'll recall, last year, we did a lot of work on talking about, like, the mechanism for this tax. It's enforced by the Agency of Taxes, and so they have a long list. What they do is, when a town adopts the local options tax, as we did last year, through their tax records, they have a whole list of who is based in Woodstock and might be needing to collect that tax. They also have a list of vendors that aren't based in Woodstock, but, you know, make sales in Woodstock that meet certain thresholds. So, I believe the threshold is any vendor that does $200,000 worth of business, or 100 sales, either or, in a given year. But, you know, that's entirely on the person paying the tax, like it is when we pay our taxes, to make sure that that's accurate. The online sales, you know, to Eric's point, are, I think, exceeding our expectations. We expected and estimated the tax based on the retail that we do in Woodstock, and not the digital sales that are being delivered in Woodstock, and so that's great. But, again, it's on the company to make sure that they're compliant with current tax law.
Any other questions or comment? Oh, Susan.
Susan Fuller, just for, again, a clarification, when we have the money in the Infrastructure Reserve Fund from the 1%, and that's going to be spent on a project, how is that determined to be allocated? Is the select board doing it? Is it by a vote, special vote? Or how is that money approved by the community? Or is it just through select board and meetings?
It'll be the select board in a publicly won meeting.
Any other questions? Yep, we've got a couple over here, Ryan. We get, yep, go to Carolyn, and then there was one more. I can't remember, oh, yep.
Hi, Carolyn Kimball. Curious what defines infrastructure?
I think we left it purposely pretty open last year, when, so let me back up for a second. Oh, I'll answer your question. We left it kind of broad on purpose, kind of any needs that, infrastructure, so roads, sidewalks, piping, plants, anything that kind of improves the actual infrastructure of Woodstock, is how we're defining it.
Bill had a question right behind you, Ryan.
Matt, do you mind if I also just jump on that response? Which is, I think, again, to Eric's point, we left it vague, but vague in the sense that, like, it is still going to be at the discretion of the select board with input from the community, as we do disperse the other, the economic development and community fund too. So, it's the same mechanism we're using for that. When there's a need arises, it's up to us to determine whether or not that's economic development, and that's also why we created goals and objectives this year, is to be able to, you know, tie things and say, like, okay, is this moving those things forward? And if so, that will determine how much we allocate to it.
Bill.
Yeah. Bill Dagger, just to get a little more definition on that, do we have anticipated needs now that are targeted for this money?
The select board has, I'll.
Oh, I was going to just say, we did designate some of the money toward the bond payment for the water company.
Susan, can you pull the microphone? I don't think they heard.
Oh, sorry.
Just pull it closer.
Sorry if you didn't hear me. We did designate some of these funds, as well as some of the economic development, the money that goes to presently is governed by the Economic Development Commission, to the bond payment for the water system.
All the way in the back right, Ryan, or Axel?
Thank you, Tom Phillips, Woodstock. I understand the capital reserve is quite different than the 1%. Is there a term that the capital reserve can be kept in reserve without being deployed? And then additionally, if this was not used in its entirety, the 1%, is there some allowable reliance so that we could build up, let's say, a larger expense were to come next year, and we may need a year and a half of this type of 1% money to satisfy that? Are those allowed in this? Is it state mandated?
Yeah, so one of the reasons by setting up this separate fund, which we just did a few minutes ago in the last article, is that it won't go away, it'll stay in that fund until it's expended, and each new revenue will come in, will go back into that fund. So, by setting up its own unique fund, it means it will roll over each year in that fund, and we won't lose it to undesigned fund balance. Capital reserve is similar, because we move it out of capital reserve into a capital fund, it does not go away at the end of the fiscal year, so we can build up money over the years and then spend it when we need to. There's no obligation on the select board to spend this money each year, they can hold it in there so long as they want.
And any change in spending anything like that would have to come before a townwide vote to redesignate those funds.
If I just point a clarification, this 1% has already been approved last year. This article is just to allow the revenue that is coming in to go into the specific funds, so that's what this article is about.
Any other questions or comments?
Move the question?
I think we're there anyway, if there are no, if you don't mind. All those, I'll just reread Article 10, Shall the Voters of Woodstock Vote to Have All Revenue Received by the Town From the 1% Local Option Sales Tax Deposited Into the Infrastructure Reserve Fund? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Article 11, Shall the Voters of Woodstock Establish a Reserve Fund to Be Called the Discretionary Reserve Fund to Be Used at the Discretion of the Select Board in accordance with 24 Vermont Statutes Annotated Section 2804? What's your pleasure on Article 11? Moved by Betty Ann McGuire. Second by Marian.
Yeah, I wasn't going to talk a lot today, but somehow, the microphone's attached to my hand. So, then, again, these two, next two articles kind of go together. For any of you who paid attention to the kind of the water vote we had, we talked a lot about the undesigned fund balance. What undesigned fund balance is, is kind of a surplus that builds up year over year, and that money kind of sits in our accounts with no real understanding of how much it is until we have an audit, and then no real rules on how to spend it, or what it can be spent on. That's why, in October, we held a special town meeting to ask the residents if the select board could use the undesigned fund balance to go towards a water purchase. So, what we're asking for in the next two articles is, one, to set up a new reserve fund. The second is, anytime the undesigned fund balance is over 15% of the yearly budget, the select board can, if they want, in a public meeting, vote to move that extra money into this fund. The reason we're asking to do that is twofold. One is, in case there's an emergency and we need funds available, the select will have this fund able to use when it needs to. So, if we have another flooding event, and we don't have the money in the operating budget to cover the costs, the select will have this money there available for them. The second is kind of transparency and knowledge of money we have. We don't know what's in the undesigned fund balance until the audit is completed. The audit is for the previous fiscal year. So, right now, we're on March 1st, we don't have the audit done from last fiscal year yet, so we don't know what our undesigned fund balance is for the last year. This will allow us to move money each year, if the select board wants to, into this fund, and then we know that we have this money sitting in there to be used as we want, or as the residents want, without this kind of unknown clarity.
And I just wanted to add that you'll see in the paper, a lot of towns are struggling to pay for the flood damage while they wait for FEMA reimbursement. Because we had these funds, we were able to pay for the flood damage and then get reimbursed from FEMA, so we are not in the position that a lot of other towns in Vermont have found themselves.
Any other questions? Marian, have you met Morgan?
My memory from years on school board was the undesigned fund balance was often and encouraged to be used to reduce taxes in a subsequent year, and I wonder if that's going to be lost.
No, so the money that will go into this reserve count, the select will be able to use at the discretion, so if they choose to lower the tax rates, they'll be able to, or if they choose to offset some of the tax increase, they'll be able to do that as well.
What's, is there, oh, sorry, I looked right over you. Sally, right behind you.
Sally Garmen, Woodstock. I have concerns on this, that it's almost like a slush fund, and the voters really won't know what is being transferred until it's after the fact. As it is now, I think you call special meetings to see if these funds can be transferred, and it seems to me, as a taxpayer, it's a much safer way to deal with our tax funds.
Yeah, so the way the next article is written is, 15% of the undesigned fund balance will stay where it is, that money is not going to be moved. This only gives the select board the option, if there's a balance over 15%, to move that over. If they choose to do that, that will be done in a public meeting, and then any decision they make on that fund will be also in a public meeting, so the residents can come and advocate for the way they want it to be spent.
This also allows us, right now, when we have an emergency come up or something unforeseen, we have to find that money in the budget. Right now, we have to, like, move money around and do some kind of math magic. This allows us to not have to take funds from, you know, other places, but also not have to take on short-term debt to cover the costs of those things.
Are there questions? Seeing none, we will vote on Article 11. Shall the Voters of Woodstock Establish a Reserve Fund to Be Called the Discretionary Reserve Fund to Be Used at the Discretion of the Select Board in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2804? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Article 11 is adopted. Article 12, Shall the Voters of Woodstock, in the event that after the yearly audit, the undesigned fund balance exceeds 15% of the current fiscal year budget, grant the select board the authority to transfer the surplus funds over 15% to fund the discretionary reserve fund? What's your pleasure on Article 12? Moved by Betty Ann, second by Allison. Any questions or comments? I think we've discussed this during the previous one. Seeing none, we'll vote on Article 12. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Article 12 is adopted. And as we agreed earlier, we're going to just slide Article 13 down a couple. Article 14, Shall the Voters of Woodstock Vote to Eliminate the Elected Auditor Positions in accordance with 17 Vermont Statutes with 17 Vermont statutes annotated, section 2651B, and enter into a contract with a public accountant or auditor's firm licensed in this state to perform an annual financial audit of all funds of the town, except the funds audited pursuant to 16 Vermont statutes annotated, section 323. What's your pleasure on Article 14? Moved by Betty Ann, second by Marion.
If I could, this is just a cleanup. The village trustees did this two years ago. We currently, and I think forever going forward, contract with an outside auditor to do the audit. The select position at this point would only basically just read the audit aloud in a public meeting, which we do anyways, with the auditor to come and present their findings. So it's kind of just a cleanup of a position that's no longer appointed or used for the town.
Yes, Marion.
Just a question of who approves the professional auditor? I thought the town auditors, but of course, we haven't really been represented by them for a while. I thought that was their responsibility. Is it Select Board responsibility?
Yes. And I think that the goal this year from the Select Board is to have RFP out for, to look at and have a new auditor potentially as well.
I'm going to assign you a seat up front next year.
And your own microphone.
Are there any other questions or comments on Article 14? Seeing none, we will vote on Article 14 as warned. All the, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Article 14 is adopted. Article 15, shall the voters of Woodstock vote to provide notice of the availability of the annual report by making formal announcements in a publicly worn meeting and posting on the town's website at least 30 days before the annual meeting, instead of mailing or otherwise distributing the report to the voters of the town pursuant to 24 Vermont statutes annotated, section 1682A? What's your pleasure on Article 15? Moved by Kitty, second by Molly.
And if I could, this is kind of just a cleanup as well. I spent the last two years with the town clerk every winter freaking out about the statute. So the state statute that says the town report needs to be mailed out to every resident, we have not been doing that for a very long time. VLCTZ, what we currently do is okay, but because we do make it available for everyone, this is just codifying the fact that we're going to make it available for someone. We don't have to actually mail an individual copy to each resident in their home. So as you know, it'll be available on the website, at Town Hall, and other locations as well. So it's kind of codifying the fact that we don't have to mail it out to every single resident and save time and money on that process.
David?
It doesn't say anything at all about a piece of paper in your hand.
So we're saying it's going to be available. So that means we'll be available for you in any format that you either, on the website or in your hand if you want. We will always have hard copies available.
We'll hold you to that.
Please do. And if you notice, I'm, sorry, if you came through with town reports, we actually printed out, actually, there you go, copies for you from the soft copy. So we'll always have that available.
Yep, can you just wait out for the microphone? She's right there.
I just wanted to ask whether it would be, does it get published in the Vermont Standard as well? Is that?
It's too long.
It's too long. It's too large. Okay.
It's 78 pages.
Oh.
So that'd be a few weeks of the Standard all wrapped in one.
Dumb question.
This isn't changing what we've been doing for years. It's just establishing it explicitly. We've been doing this since I was on the Select Board 20 years ago.
Just so, every winter Charlie can talk about this, I come down freaking out, asking for the statute, and we spend time looking through it. This is for the next person to say, yep, in 2025, they voted to make this happen, and no one freaks out.
It's really just clarifying current practice. Yes. We can vote on that, or we can just vote on the question if you indulge me. I don't see any further questions or comments, so. All those in favor of Article 15? Please say aye. Those opposed? Article 15 is adopted. So she had moved the question anyway. We were going to vote on that, so I apologize. Article 15 is adopted. That brings us now to Article 13, which we've taken out of order. So shall the voters of Woodstock authorize the elimination of the office of town lister in accordance with Chapter 17 Vermont statutes annotated, section 2651C subset B1, and replace it with a professionally qualified assessor or assessors who shall have the same powers, discharge the same duties, proceed in the discharge thereof in the same manner, and be subject to the same liabilities as are prescribed for listers or the board of listers under the provisions of Title 32? What's your pleasure on Article 13? Moved by Betty Ann, second by Jeff. Questions or comments? Yes, Jill, right behind you.
Could you speak to the net estimated cost of making this change?
As of right now, there'd probably be a savings of around $20,000 to $30,000. The town currently has, by law, three elected listers. This change would make it appointed, and the Select Board feels that they could make do with just two appointed assessors in the office.
Other questions? Yes, Charlie.
Thank you. Charlie Kimball. Wow. I'd like to speak in favor of this particular article. I represent three towns, and on each town, this is on the ballot, because we ask a lot of our listers in the state to verify the grant list, which is eight U's to fund our education system. And it's not easy. It's a highly technical position. You need professionals in the job, and towns struggle to find people who are willing and able to actually do the job. So I definitely support this. I think one of our listers does as well, is committed in the newspaper to doing it. So I urge you all to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Right behind you, Roy, and then we'll get to you, Doug.
What are the qualifications of these assessors? Do they require a professional degree or stuff like that? Or are we going to be able to use our current listers?
Yeah, so if this passes, the two current listers in office will receive job offers, might as soon as they both accept them, and will continue with the two we have. The two we have right now, I'm very happy with. They go to training. One, I think Tim's still here. They finish every day at 12. He stayed all week to 4:30 doing trainings to kind of, you know, expand his knowledge of it. Kathy as well is excellent with customer service and knowing everything. She's the one who came to us with updated grant lists to make sure the tax rate would be lower. So we're very happy with the knowledge we have with the two. We're very happy for those two to lead the new appraisal going forward for the next few years.
Doug, you had a?
So could you just clarify, are these going to be town employees, or do you ever foresee contracting this position out to a company that isn't necessarily in Woodstock?
Town employees. I don't foresee us contracting out anytime soon.
Any other questions or comments about this? And just a note of order, by statute, we have to vote this by paper ballot. So we will do that when we get there in just a minute. We're going to do that a little more orderly than I did at the special meeting.
We have a few less people, I think, luckily.
Yeah, but, yes. Joe, sorry.
Joe DiNatale, are you at all dissatisfied? Does the quality of the work that's being produced now not up to what is expected of that department? And is that one of the reasons why? Because it seems to me that, you know, there's one more issue that's taken away from the voters and given to one entity.
I think the thought.
And I'm questioning why it's really necessary.
Yeah, I think the thought, Joe, is to have just more continuity. And every time you elect a new lister, they have to go through a ton of training to get up to speed. Well, they don't have to, okay. But if they don't, it's difficult to get the job done. Right, so they don't have to be trained. Our current ones are trained.
So Joe, that's a great question. So this is the difference. If they're a town employee, we can make them do the training. We can make them understand the rules. We can make sure they're following the guidelines. As elected officials, myself and the Select Board doesn't have that power to do anything for them. And that's kind of the difference. So my view is, when you come in, because your house has been reappraised for $1,000 more, and you're angry, I want someone there that can give you the right answer and do it in a polite and courteous way.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, I can't. Oh, Susan, you blended in with the person behind you, couldn't see who you were.
Susan Fuller, I want to support going forward with this article, because as having in my previous life been a trained real estate appraiser, I know how difficult it is and how much it requires knowledge of buildings. And when you're putting people's taxation on their houses on the line, it's important to have people who are well-educated. That's not to say we don't have well-educated elected officials now, but it seems that it makes sense that they be part of our actual government here and appointed based on their abilities.
Any other questions or comments before we move to a vote? So you can all see the article. We are now going to go to a paper ballot. We will have the checklist right over at this table. We'll have a couple of JPs there. What we're going to do, we're going to start on this side of the room. I'm going to ask you to go out through the lobby and come down the aisle, so that when you're done, you can file back into this side. When that's done, we'll take the middle section and go up and around, and then the left side can come down the aisle when they're all done, just to make it move quickly. Allison and Charlie will be there to take questions. While we're doing this, I thought it'd be a great time to thank our three scouts for helping run the microphone. Ryan, Axel, and Morgan. And I thought it would also be a good time for all of us. Today's Morgan's birthday. So if you would join me. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, dear Morgan. Happy birthday to you. We have two Article 15s. The second one is now going to be Article 33. And that is to entertain the discussion of any other business of interest to the legal voters. Such discussion shall not be construed in any manner as binding municipal action. This is an article where you can bring any concern or anything you want to comment on before this meeting, but we can't take any legally binding action. Yes, Marion? Morgan, can you, oh, do you have a microphone? Marion wants her microphone, Morgan.
I wanted to take a moment to formally put into the minutes how valuable all the outreach that has happened with this Select Board and with Eric Duffy's leadership. It's been so nice to be informed. And for them to take ways of doing it that, you know, you don't have to knock on the door. It's coming at you. And if you want more information, this is the 20 ways you can get it. I just can't say enough about how important that's been.
Thank you. Any other, any other business to come before the meeting under this article? Seeing none, we will, what's that? We will move on. I'm just going to breeze through the Australian ballot articles that we will be voting on on Tuesday. If there's, Article 16, if there's anybody here running for office that wants to say a couple of brief words, now would be the time. Seeing none. Article 17 is, shall the voters vote to appropriate $51,250 for the Norman Williams Public Library? Is there anybody who wanted to speak on behalf of the library? Yes, all the way, ah, hi Claire. Why would you want to speak about the library?
Hi, I'm Claire McFarlane. I'm the director of the library. And I guess we would just like everyone to know that we fully appreciate the financial constraints of this town at the moment, and we do not take our requests lightly. That being said, in fact, we haven't increased our request in a number of years, 10 years at least. And we are working to be as fiscally responsible as we possibly can. We have tightened our belts. We have increased our fundraising. We are doing a better job of looking for grants, all in an effort to not have to ask more of the town. And we just would like everyone to be aware of that. We are a very active part of this community, and and we're a strong part. Our library is part of the fabric, and I can't imagine our town without it. That's all.
And I understand you got your sustainability certification, correct?
Is it on?
Yes.
It's Lori Chester. I just want to say that for anybody that's a new resident here, I don't know if there are some, but it's important to realize that the Norman Williams Library is not a municipal library. It's one of very few that isn't. Am I correct? And so the town, we are asking, or I'm not on library board anymore, sometimes I forget that, but, you know, the library's asking for funds, but they really, it's not anywhere near what it costs to run a public, a municipal library, because of their extensive fundraising and everything to keep it going. So this does not seem like an unreasonable request at all. In fact, it's a very minor request for such a facility that serves so many.
All right. Article 18 is $30,000 for the Otaqueche Health Foundation. Yes, if, Ryan, right behind you, this gentleman would like to.
Hello, my name's David Sleeper. I became executive director of OHF just two weeks ago, so I'm still finding my way around. I'm filling the large shoes of Mary Young Breilu, who I think is still here. I know she was here, and I'm delighted to do that. I moved here with my wife 24 years ago, and I've lived in three of the nine towns served by OHF. So I've known something about what OHF does, and actually, I worked for a nonprofit organization that was, we had our offices in the wonderful Simmons House. But it's just in the last few weeks that I've really got a sense of what the foundation does, and especially what it does for Woodstock. As we all know, there's a $30,000 ask for OHF, but I do have some numbers to share from you. In 2024, there were 105 Good Neighbor and Home Care Grants given by OHF to Woodstock, and that totaled $102,000. In addition, there were $5,000 worth of community grants. So it is So it is a, I would argue, and I think many here would agree, that it is an investment well-made, and I'm delighted to be working for OHF. Thank you.
Thank you. And Article 19 is $7,500 for Woodstock Community Television. Thank you for everything you do to, you know, broadcast our town meetings and such, so, thanks. Article 20 is $2,500 for Windsor County Mentors. Is there anybody who has any comments there? Article 21, $1,000 for Green Mountain RSVP and Volunteer Center. Seeing nobody. Article 22, $6,000 for Senior Solutions. Anybody here representing them? Okay. Article 23 is $10,000 for the Woodstock History Center in support of their education mission. Yes, all the way in the back, Morgan? Is that Jill?
Hi, everyone. My name is Jill Mitchell, formerly Jill Barr, before this guy came along. I was, I was reading Eddie's dedication in the town report and, and got to thinking about my own history here. And in counting back, at least as far as I know, that would make these guys the same generation as Eddie, sixth generation. So we have, my family's been here for some time, and while Woodstock is the town that it is for many of us, the nice hallmark community that it is for me and for many of us here, it's our history. It's our heritage, it's our family. And I don't know how many of you have taken advantage to look at the gem of the Woodstock History Center that we have in town, but the work that Matt Powers and his team put into making this something extraordinary is, is really something unmatched. The, the educational, um, offers that they have, the presentations, the exhibits, the old-time fair that they have, they do guided and self-guided tours throughout the summer. It's really something exceptional, and I really ask that you support this article. Also, drop them a like on Facebook, follow them on Facebook. They offer some really cool photos and some really, really cool things. This, this town has a history and, and it matters, and my family matters, and I, I want to make sure it stays that way. Thanks.
Thanks, Jill. And, and we now have the ninth generation of my family working in the zoning and planning office.
We haven't had planning and zoning that long, Matt.
Let's see, where are we? Article 24 is $3,000 for the Public Health Council of the Upper Valley. Oh, back right, Axel. And again, these will all be voted on Tuesday by Australian ballot.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Nancy Bloomfield. I'm a resident of Sharon and a volunteer with the Public Health Council of the Upper Valley. Because I'm a volunteer, I did write down a few things to share with you, so I appreciate just a moment of your time. I want to thank the Woodstock voters who signed petitions to allow our article to be considered, and I just wanted to share a little bit about the work that we do. So the Public Health Council is the Upper Valley's trusted leader in public health. We are supporting people as individuals, professionals, and organizations in this community. We work on all of those three levels to build healthier, more equitable communities across a wide variety of different issues. As public health challenges like health disparities, limited access to care, and resource constraints become more complex, our organization remains dedicated to adapting to the evolving needs of the community and the evolution of the resources that are available for public health. As, as you all know, this is a time when funding for public health is, is very much in flux. I'll share a few things with you about what we do very briefly, but if you'd like to learn more about what we do before tomorrow's vote, our website is uvpublichealth.org, and there's a lot of great information on there. But just so you know, we work across the Bay State region. We have volunteers speaking at town meetings across the Upper Valley in Vermont and New Hampshire. In New Hampshire, we're recognized as a regional public health network, and we also work very closely with the Department of Public Health in, in Vermont and health organizations here. But our work can be a little bit behind the scenes and invisible. So a few things I can share with you is, last year, we hosted six flu vaccine clinics, providing close to 1,000 free, free vaccines. I know one of those was in Bradford, Vermont, and we had local volunteers supporting that effort. We supported services for older adults in part by hosting a Bay State Legislative Breakfast where we helped to make sure that our legislators across both states really understood what some of the barriers were for seniors in accessing health. And another thing that I just wanted to mention really briefly is that we are really dedicated as an organization to making sure that underserved communities' needs are being elevated so that there is never a reason why someone is experiencing a barrier to healthcare. And so one example of that is working with the Upper Vality, Upper Valley's Equity and Anti-Racism Coalition as we planned this false vaccine clinics to make sure that, of the folks that they work most, most closely with, we're accessing aware, aware of those clinics and, and comfortable attending. So just a few examples, I appreciate your time, especially as we're a new organization for Woodstock to consider. Thank you very much for considering, supporting us.
Thank you. So Article 25 is $1,250 to support the Spectrum's Teen Center. Is there anybody who wants to say anything about that fine organization? Seeing none. Article 26 is $3,247 to Healthcare and Rehabilitation Services to support outpatient mental health and substance use services. Anybody want to speak on their behalf? Looks like no. Article 27 is $3,000 to support the mission of WISE. Is there anybody here to speak? Looks like seeing none. Article 28 is $8,000 to Mount Ascotney Hospital and Health Center to support the Community Care Coordinator. Yes, Marion?
I, I wanted to give a little bit of history on the Community Care Coordinator position. That position was originally established with a, um, a partnership with Otaqueechi Health Foundation and Mount Ascotney Hospital, and was in place for about 12 years, Carla Camel being the most recent person that was in that position up until about 2022. And when the position, it, it was at that point all part of Mount Ascotney's budget, and they were using Vermont State Blueprint for Health money to fund it. They didn't fill that position, and after a bit of time, there were four or five organizations, nonprofit organizations, that really felt the pain of that missing person. So Otaqueechi Health Foundation, the hub, the schools, the Mount, um, Thompson Senior Center, and, uh, Mount Ascotney got together and had some discussions about it. And to their credit, Mount Ascotney Hospital reestablished four or three-year term funding to help support a partial replacement of that position. The purpose of that position, Carla is a professional, she goes in house, in homes to people that, um, and, and can assess needs for seniors, disabled folks, people that are in, in poverty, and need connections to things like state-funded SNAP cards for health, for disability, for social security. I mean, the list goes on and on, on the resources, the public resources that she connects people to. When she was lost to us, and I speak in terms of the hub because I'm the project leader for that, for that, or that project, um, of the Woodstock Community Trust, when she was lost to us, we found that the nonprofits were having to, um, invest more of their granting toward things that really were government, should have been government-supported. With her re-establishment a little over a year ago, the pressure has come off, and we've been able, the hub especially, has been able to go back to its mission of supporting people that are in a temporary financial crisis, but particularly those that don't qualify for services elsewhere. So I strongly encourage this support. It goes a very long way. I know we've asked, I think, one other town about it, and Mount Ascotney is the, the reason that it is addressed to Mount Ascotney is because they, as part of our partnership, have been doing the fundraising piece. They've allowed their fundraiser to work for us. So any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Marion. And Article 29 is $42,000 to support Pentangle Arts. I think we're all familiar with Pentangle. Yep, right in the back. Ryan, can you go straight back? Thank you for the lovely theater.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for that. My name is Deborah Green. I am the executive director for the last almost seven months now, and I just wanted to say a couple of words. You are all very familiar, as you know, as we sit and hear about Pentangle. It's 50 years old, going on 51, and I want to say that I am just deeply grateful for the warm welcome that people have given me and continue as I support the growth of Pentangle. We recognize that this is a difficult time for many people and for our community, and the place of the arts is going to be even more and more critical with the funding challenges that students are having. And we are spending a lot of our effort to continue to create more opportunities for the students. We are working to have people flowing in and out of this theater all the time, in the afternoons, in the evenings, and part of the refurbish of it is so that this really does become a place of communion and community so that we can reach across the border, uh, boundaries that we find ourselves in. Please do take a look at what, what's going on. The, the new website, actually, which is going to be much easier to handle, is coming out on Monday, and we're really looking forward for you to see some of the new programming that's happened. Thank you.
Thank you. And Article 30 is the tax exemption, the five-year tax exemption for Zach's Place. If you can go right back, Ryan?
Pentangle was founded by five civic-minded women from the community, one of whom happens to be here, Lee Ketchadorian.
Sorry, I didn't mean to jump ahead. Zach's Place exemption, this is a typical, all our nonprofits have to do this every five years to be exempted from property tax. Mike, did you want to say something?
I'm Mike Moriarty, and my son Keegan has been a participant at Zach's Place from the very beginning. And Woodstock has been a great town for Zach's Place, and not only for the, the people from our area, but people from outside our area. And it's called an enrichment center, and it's not only for the participants, but I believe that it's also for the whole town, that when they get involved in what's going on in our community through their activities around, through the play, through the various different things that they do, it enriches our whole town. So I appreciate everybody's support for this. I know there's a lot of people asking for money here. It's always difficult, but thank you for considering Zach's Place.
I can tell you, over 26 years of delivering, one of my favorite places to deliver. Article 31 is $20,000 for the support of Scotland House. And Article 32 is $43,200 for the Thompson Senior Center. Yes?
Hi there, Mary Bourgeois, Board of Directors at the Thompson. Just a few words, the Thompson continues to serve Woodstock residents to the far reaches of our town, serving more than 80% of the older adults on our census. We assist older adults every day with critical services ranging from meals and rides to scam prevention, grocery shopping, medication delivery, and so much more. Being aware of and knowing the resource that the Thompson Center is, is important to all of us as we and our neighbors age in place. We appreciate the opportunity to speak at town meeting, to remind our town, we're here for everyone, and we not only deliver meals and provide rides and wellness classes, offer fun social opportunities to help combat social isolation. We also offer free tax preparation, Medicare and insurance counseling, free medical equipment, help with small jobs, facilitate home sharing, and give referrals to vetted service providers to help our community live more successfully and safely in our homes. Our services and participation grow significantly every year. We're currently in the process of expanding our building in order to keep up with the demand as our community ages. That expansion is being funded completely through private fundraising, and what we are asking of the town is to go to direct operations. So we are very thankful for your support. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary. So before we adjourn, Article 13, the results of our paper ballot are 105 yes, 10 no. So Article 13 has been passed. Just a, a quick reminder, next year is Bring a Friend to Town Meeting Day. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, or did you have a comment you wanted to make first?
Yes.
Sure. Ryan, or Axel, can you, can you just bring the microphone up really quickly? Hold on, we've got a microphone so folks can hear you.
I would just, my name is Frances Lancaster. I live out on Barberry Hill. We arrived here on April 1st, 40, it'll be 47 years ago, in a snowstorm from the suburbs. We're still there and loving every minute of living here in Woodstock, so I can't say thank you enough to all of you and to anyone else in this room that has served and to the Thompson since we just rolled down the hill. It has just been a wonderful experience for our children and for us, and we're very grateful. Thank you.
We're sorry that you've been stuck for 47 years, but we'll try to get you shoveled out. I'm familiar with it. All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn until Tuesday. Molly, Second Jeffrey, all those in favor say aye.